Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018, at 6:30 in the evening, and it's Saki outside. Let the record show the councilors are all present. And folks, you have the minutes of December 12th in your packet.
Can we proceed to revise?
Yes. Karen, give those with the minor changes. Do they meet with your approval?
I move to approve the minutes of December 12th.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Visitor or public comment? See you. Good evening. Welcome to the city council.
Well, thank you. My name is John Biden, 264 C Street. My comment would just be, you probably already know I do a lot of things on Facebook chat, and it seems to start quite discussions. One of the things I'd like to ask about is, is there any way that we could have information on things that are going on, like with the city hall and all that stuff, ahead of time? You know, I'll tell you, I'm a busy person. Maybe there was something in the paper or something else, I don't know. But when you go to the agenda on the website and all of a sudden hears, okay, somebody's gonna pay $350,000 for the city hall, and they have a possibility of getting $300,000 back then, and, you know, we don't know any of this kind of stuff. We don't know what's going on. I would be the first to admit, I don't understand the way, you know, what you need to do as far as attracting business, or how long the revenues from a place like that would take to, you know, make giving somebody $300,000 worth of it, or anything else. I mean, is this something that, since it's the same developer that took over Stonehenge, is this, you know, was this a pre-made deal with this guy where, you know, if you do this, we'll do something with the city hall with you? Or, you know, a lot of people would just like to be informed and know, because sometimes it tends to make people feel like, no, this doesn't sound right. You know, and luckily, we have a lot of citizens independents that are concerned about the welfare of the city and the way things run. You know, we have people that are concerned of, you know, how many beer establishments we need in a town this small. I realize that we're trying to be a, you know, a place of, you know, a destination for people to go to, a hotel, and we need to have places for people to go if they're visiting. But, you know, like, one of the things I mentioned to somebody was, you know, it sounds like a really good deal for this guy. Did anybody from around here get offered the same deal? You know, maybe they wanted to start a business, a local person? So anyway, I guess my final thing is just, if there is a place that we could have information for everybody to see, you know, what's in the plans, you know, a month ago, or even two weeks ago, you know, this is what we're planning on doing, this is what we want to do. Because the last I heard, you know, the city hall was gonna be, you know, the new museum. And then it was gonna be a distillery, and then it was gonna be, you know, back to maybe it's gonna be the museum again. And it's just kind of hard to follow it. And then when all of a sudden you go to the city council meeting, and you pull up the agenda, and hears, okay, now it's gonna be a brewery. And it just seems like it happens so quick. You know, I think everybody just wants to be informed, and I think everybody would like to be a part of whatever it takes to keep Independence, you know, a great place to live. And, you know, somebody else mentioned on Facebook today, you know, I think it was you, that, you know, everybody has different wants and needs or anything else, and they're all okay. It's just not everybody's gonna agree on the same thing. And I think when it comes to being something that maybe the people that don't want, you know, they feel a little shafted, and then all of a sudden it's like, oh, you just pull it up and, oh, we have a brewery, you know? And so I think, I think that's the thing I'd just like to see, is if we could be informed in a longer timeframe. So maybe if we haven't submitted, we could contact a city council member or somebody and ask, you know, what's the deal with this? You know, how can you afford to give away $300,000? Or why isn't it gonna be the museum? You know, just things like that. Because I think when it comes up and you see the information, and it's, okay, they're gonna vote on the city council meeting, you kind of feel like, well, what are you gonna do now? You know, it's kind of like the old saying, you know, you can't fight city hall, and, you know, hopefully nobody really wants to kind of fight the city hall, but it's just that if we're not informed, we don't feel like, you know, I think a lot of people feel more left out than uninformed. So if we do that, that would be great.
Thanks. Appreciate that. We will have a detailed report a little bit later.
Can I add something to that? Another place that you might get information from is join the Independence Downtown Association. And that's the first, or excuse me, the second Thursday of every month at 8 o'clock at Independence Row. It's fun and informative, and I promise I won't ask you to volunteer for anything.
She's lying about that.
Yeah.
Anybody else stepping up? I'm gonna keep moving us forward under reports and presentations. Let me just give you a couple of things under my report. I had the pleasure of emceeing the recent Senator Wyden's Town Hall that held at Western Oregon University. I did have a chance to talk to the senator a little bit about some things related to the upcoming census, and I previously visited with some of his staff, and they shared some of those concerns, so that was, that was real good. Just to let folks know, we do have a couple of positions coming open on the budget committee. And so if anybody wants to apply to be on the budget committee, there are two positions that people can apply for, and we'll move on those. And I wanted to just take a moment, and council, you know, you folks don't get thanked very often, and I know you're all volunteers, all of you are working, but I just wanted to take a moment and say publicly, thank you for the work that you do, because I know the work that you have to do to prepare for this, these meetings, all the time. I know this weekend we were reading lots of exciting financial reports, and I know that you folks worked really hard to be prepared. And when you have questions, I know that from the staff tells me, that you've called in and asked the questions in advance, and many of you have been around long enough to know how things are wired and put together, so you know some of the answers to things. But I just wanted to just take a moment and say how much I appreciate the work that you all do in advance to get ready, because that really helps move things along. Some cities are not so lucky, and people don't read their packet until they're at the dais, and that really slows things down. So just want you to know how much I personally appreciate you, and I know so many of the other parts of the community do, so. Yay!
Thank you.
Thank you. That would, thank you for the applause of the group. I do appreciate that. Moving us properly forward, if that's okay, let's go to council liaison reports. And Council Libsco, you have, I think you have a couple tonight?
Yes. I have the library report. The library, we made yesterday. The library will be closed on February the 19th for President's Day. February 26th is Independence Birthday, the day that the two towns, Town of Independence and Henry Hill's Town of Independence, were incorporated together as independents. In celebration, the museum is planning a birthday party and a history scavenger hunt. The library will hold a program for children about what it was like for children on the Oregon Trail on the 27th, with the museum and the Heritage Society. Dr. Seuss' birthday is coming up on Friday, March 2nd. The library's celebration will be at 7:00. Once again, we are having the high school students who need to complete community service projects before graduation. Juniors also participate, but with fewer hours. Library staff is working with the CSC, Central School District, and others to develop a makerspace at Henry Hill. CSC received a grant from the Oregon Community Foundation, and the school district is providing the funds. Where the library fits in is in helping to develop the public access to the facility. We are considering submitting a grant to develop a weekly-by-weekly library night at the makerspace, possibly with some education programs held at the library. That's it.
Great. Anything, was there a rule of thumb meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
It was really short.
Okay.
Because our meetings are only an hour. So, WIMPAC. We met on January the 9th. We discussed the budget, and so far this year, we don't need equipment right now. And our goals and direction for the future are, how is our core mission served? Where is WIMPAC headed? And we're supposed to work on these questions for our next meeting in February. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilor Warren. Anything from the museum?
Yes, and thank you to Shannon Cocaine for preparing a report for me, because I made most of the meetings, but I missed the last one. So the first thing she says is, the Heritage Museum partnered with the Museum Commission and the Banport Mosaic, which you all saw as you came in. It's out in the lobby, and this is the last day that it will be up, so if you haven't had a chance to look at it closely, please do so. And big news is that Dennis Everly has resigned as Museum Commission President. I think he's held that position for...
The beginning of time.
Yes. He's decided to let others take the reins for a while, and they'll be, the commission members and the museum staff are working on a lifetime achievement award to honor his 40-plus years of volunteering with the museum. And Vicki McCubbin, who is out in the audience, has been elected, was elected at the January 10th meeting to succeed Mr. Everly, and did you know it was an appointment for life? I'm learning these things as I go along. She's also the vice president of the Heritage Museum Society, which supports the nonprofit that supports the mission of the museum. And they also talked about the Independence Birthday celebration, and that there will be activities throughout the week. They cite the date, February 24th. Details will be going out in our next Waterville. They have, the museum has partnered with the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron to bring a native member on as an intern. Stephanie Woods will begin her internship on February 1st, and will focus primarily on authenticating native artifacts, developing mini pop-up exhibits, and coordinating culturally-focused classes for students to include home school children and adults. This is a four-month-long internship. And in early March, the museum will be given inventory of their collection. The first phase will be funded by the Heritage Museum Society, and will be conducted by volunteers. The second phase will fully inventory the entire collection, and I know the museum is always interested in taking on more volunteers. I've done some of this work. You get to wear very attractive white gloves, and you get to handle all the fun stuff in the museum, so please consider volunteering for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Before we go to the city manager report, I neglected to let you know, I'm issuing a proclamation that many of you have seen Pacific Powers, about the smart meters here in town. They've been on every TV station out of the Portland area, and part of the, whereas I won't read them all, Pacific Powers chose them to embrace Independence' goal of becoming a smart rural community with their inaugural deployment of smart meters in Oregon. I'm declaring that Saturday, February 10th, is Smart Rural Community and Smart Meter Day in Independence. And, hey.
You called too solemn.
There you go. One in, now, have a celebration. But anyway, there's some wonderful video on TV. People in the Portland metro area are learning. They're learning a little geography, they're learning where Independence is, and so really appreciate that. Mr. City Manager, to you?
Yeah. So, Mayor, members of council, I'd like to, before I go onto my report, I'd like to ask you to take a little bit, take this a bit out of order. If I could have Gloria come up and do the audit presentation and the financial report first. She's a tad under the weather, and I want to give her a chance to escape quickly if she can.
Any objection?
No objection.
Come on up. And thank you for being here when the flu strikes.
Thank you. I appreciate your consideration, and thank you, City Manager, for that, too. Short slide presentation for you. And I hope that everybody was able to review at least a little bit the caper report before tonight. So, a little about what an audit is. An audit is a test of selected data and internal controls. It is not an exhaustive examination of transactions. An audit looks at trends such as ending cash, if ending cash has gone up or down significantly, or spending in a certain department has changed significantly. The auditor also conducts interviews with various staff regarding internal control and fraud. Our caper, this whole report, this whole bound report that you have on your diex tonight, that's a caper, it's a comprehensive annual financial report. And it is prepared largely by staff, city staff, and with the help, the financial statements are with the help of our auditor, and they audit those financial statements and the footnotes that go with them. I am responsible for those note footnotes, and I'm responsible for the underlying data in the, in the financial statements. The auditor is actually, the audit report is actually this three-page report, auditor's report. That is, the auditor's testament to the qualification of the financial report. So, this year, I would just point out, just like in years past, it's a clean opinion, they found no exceptions to the financial statements. Again, this will be the third year in a row now that we will submit this caper to the GFOA, the Government Financial Officers Association, for the Certificate of Achievement Award. It is a source of great pride that we won the award for the first time two years ago with our very first submission. The caper goes through an extensive review by three reviewers who are my peers all across the country. They're selected by the GFOA, and they have a 109-page checklist that they go through, they review this, the report with. The grading is in 17 different categories. If there's a failure in any of the great, in any of the categories, then the caper does not receive the award. So this, again, is the third year that we've submitted. We've won it two years in a row now.
Gloria, do you know how much competition you have?
It's not competitive.
It's just, you're in or you're out?
Yes. Yes. After the review, the auditors and I both received a summary of the grading and the review comments, and the review comments are ways that we can improve, or things that we must improve. And so the next submission, we go through and we fix any of those things that need to be fixed. Some of the particulars were timed to file. We had given our auditors, they had promised it for the, just before Thanksgiving, they still, it was like the first week of December, which is still in plenty of time to be timely filed and everything, with the state, with the GFOA, and all of those regulatory agencies. Again, we had a clean opinion. The financial statements referred, it says in the audit report, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities. Each major fund in aggregate remain funded information of the City of Independence. And that is the important part. The budget note, that was, there was a question earlier in the week about budget, and then we noted on this that we had some budget notes there. That is on page 64. You can find those in the detail on those. So a couple other items. Year-end cash, we ended up with perhaps a $1.5 million in unrestricted cash, which is an increase of $975,000 over the prior year. Property taxes are growing, slow, but they're growing. Overall, spending, you know, through all the funds, decreased. Our general fund and fund balance, it remains good, however, it is slightly below the 16% target of $961,000 for spending in the general fund. So this is an area that we will continue to work on. PERS is always a challenge for us. It's our budget challenge, and we're not alone as a city. The last few years, we have been setting aside 2% of the PERS, of our PERS qualified payroll and PERS liability reserve. We are exploring new legislation that we may be able to utilize to offset the rate increases. We'll continue to work towards that. Included with the staff memo was the letter from the auditor to the mayor and council. It refers to the management representation letter. A copy of that letter has been provided to you tonight, along with the bound copies of the caper and the urban renewal reports. So that is it for the audit report. If I may, I would like to go right into the quarterly report.
Go ahead.
So your quarterly report, the second quarter of our fiscal year, included in your packet, I provided my report. I really don't have much to add to that. We, it's pretty normal from year to year. We're at 93% of our property tax receipts, which is, we receive primarily those in, towards the beginning of November, and the bulk of those are received. Other than that, we have, we are experiencing a good turn of marijuana taxes. We're at 73% of what we had anticipated, so we can expect for the year to, I expect those to be quite a bit more than what we did budget. Other than that, I really don't have anything else to add to that.
Questions for finance? I had a couple of questions about the, about the taxes that we're getting. You said we have 90, what was it, 93% of...
Our general...
Our general property taxes. And so does that kind of trickle in, the last part, trickle in for the rest of the year?
Yes.
And then, and then also the marijuana taxes, is that, do we get that at some time of the year also, or is that trickle in per month?
Those are quarterly.
Quarterly?
We receive those, the marijuana taxes.
Okay.
So that's why I expect to get to be quite a bit more than market, where property taxes are primarily, the bulk of those are received in November. So I don't expect a whole lot more to be received, but we do receive, for the most part, we receive a thousand, 100% of budget of property taxes. We budget really close.
Okay. There's complaints in the town?
I appreciate receiving the Urban Renewal Agency report, because I was missing that in the quarterly report.
Yes. Yeah. You're welcome. Thanks again.
Yes, please. Klein, it's you.
Thank you. I'm gonna, gonna let Gloria escape. If you do have some more follow-up questions, I'll do my best to field them or get back to one of those things. We have them all, manly, I'm sure, by the way. I think those of you who've been around here for a while recognize where we are. I mean, it used to be questionable, you know, when we were gonna get in on time, or so this was getting it all. So we're, we're getting it on time, the quality of the product, you know, we're getting presenting in certificates of awards, and the underlying information, I think, by and large is all very promising, so we're pretty pleased with the fellow network. So a couple of other things. I'm gonna go into my management report, then I'm going to the independent's, the landing report as well, so you have that. Now, my management report, it'll take me a few minutes. I'm just gonna echo the mayor's comments, because frankly, a couple of questions came up during the week, and in the area preparation, I, you know, please, please don't treat this as a total suck up, but, you know, this council really does and has done its homework in a way that I've known in 40 years in this business. You know, I've not seen that quite that often. So people come prepared and prepared to do the work of the council, and so I have no complaints there, and I just wanted to share that. There's my suck up for the evening. Let me, there's one other issue that has come up, you know, and it has come up several times, I just want to speak to it as well. The notion of transparency. Am I too close to the mic? We okay? Okay. Break it anyway, here it is. I sometimes scratch my head a little bit. Let me just talk about what we're doing in the way of transparency, and, you know, and I hope I'm not blowing this one, but we, on and off, we've been livestreaming, are we? Yes, we are still, we are still livestreaming our council meetings, so anybody in the audience that, you know, is under the weather, they, you know, may perfectly well stay home and watch what's going on. You certainly can pick it up also on YouTube. We have many, many months of our council meetings. If somebody really enjoys these things, they just can't get away from it, they're totally hooked, you are welcome to just breeze through and spend your evening watching YouTube of city council meetings. On and off and on, it's just, it's a joy, and, oh, we're going for it. The city council has at least four Facebook, the city has at least four Facebook pages it sponsors, and there's a number of community pages as well, and we pay attention to those. And, but, we have our own Facebook pages, and we're in excess, in the cumulative of the four Facebook pages, results in excess of 10,000 likes. So we're having, and those are, of course, many of those may be repeating, but clearly there's a following for what we're doing, so there's a lot of ways that people are hearing from us. We have a Twitter account. We do, it works as one of our apps, so if people wanted to engage in the city, talk about things that are, you know, that they're concerned about, they see pond holes, tall grass, abandoned vehicles, whatever, they can get on that app, they don't need to ever contact us, they'll have good feedback from the city, targeted and personalized feedback as work gets done on their concerns. So one way or another, they will get a disposition of those concerns that they're... I do it all the time. I walk back and forth from my house. I frequently take pictures of things. the time, I walk back and forth from my house, I frequently take pictures of things I see and put them up on IndiWorks, so I, I go out and hang out with public works when I do that, but I keep doing it anyway. Another really important way to get a look at what the city is doing is on our finance page, is OpenIndy, it's a new product that we have, you can do a lot of analysis on what we're doing with the money. You know, it's very transparent, you can dive very deep into that, that page and learn lots about what we're doing, how the money's getting spent, and it's very transparent. We have the meetings board, people that sign up under the meetings board will get emails in advance with the agenda, together with all the terms, that the council will see at the same time the council sees it. So that goes to the point that the gentleman was making about sale of property. The community sees, can see it when you see it. So it's, there's nothing, I mean, that's very transparent, in my opinion. You know, that information is getting out as hard as we can on that. We do a newsletter, and we do it in both English and Spanish, so that gets out there, and you know, it's certainly, it's a monthly newsletter. Our customers, our, excuse me, our staff are all required to do customer service trains, and they'll, so they have some sense how to engage with the public at large, and again, to provide that, to understand how important transparency in customer service is. So they're all required to do that. We have our own community engagement position, for somebody who's, whose job, sole job is to get out there and meet with the community, it's targeted, but it's not all-inclusive to just electing communities, the whole community. So again, that's, that's a way of not only us sitting here waiting to be, you know, for people to ask us what's going on, or for us to get out there and say, this is going on. We do a lot of public workshops, you know, when we're doing planning projects, we just completed one, we'll talk about that in a minute, the parts workshop. We, I guess, I'm, I'm sort of, again, scratching my head, I'm not sure what we're missing in the notion of transparency, because I don't know what, you know, I think we keep trying to take advantage of every way of doing the old-fashioned and new-fashioned way of getting transparency. So this is a little bit of a line, a little bit of a pitch, but I think I just wanted to say that, you know, we get, we hear the message, but we think we're answering and addressing the issue. So I'll just throw that out there. I'll move into the awards report, it won't be so whiny. So, the bid documents for the review of this station are being reviewed, bid packet for the IndiLandings projects are ready to go out for bid in February, both those projects will go out in February. You should have a bid, both the bid awards to look at in your first meeting in March, that's the current planning at this point. So we hope to come back to you then with requests for two awards on major capital work. Public Works and the Economic Development Act will be meeting with the Oregon Corporate Aviation this week on their airport master planning work, so that's off and running, getting started. So we're getting engaged in that, trying to stand, stand top of that and be helpful. Public Works and Police Department look at integrating their fleet and building, and their fleets and buildings under one maintenance package, so they're trying to get advantage of some economies there and save some money. We are taking bids on the reader board for the library, we've talked about this for a lot of years, and we are actually getting that done now. So that will get, hopefully, we'll get underway with that in the next, you know, once we have the bids, we'll get that awarded, and that'll probably come in near $50,000, so we'll do that internally, but we'll get that out and get that work started as soon as we can. So looking forward to that, more ways to reach the public, tell them what's going on in our community. Getting lots and lots of media attention about the Pacific Power Smart Meter rollout. We have three different news channels and stories, I think I shared lots of you, on two of those stories, and then there was another story the next weekend, actually, Sean got interviewed on Martin Luther King Day, so he came in and worked like a good human, and, you know, left his kids behind for his wife to watch.
What a love to work early, good man.
Yeah.
Nice job, Sean.
Continue.
Yeah, so that's getting a lot of interest in national news as well, we're looking for , oh, some good stuff there. We are also planning a downtown tech adventure on Saturday, February 10th. Details will funnel, which is good, because I don't know many, but that's coming up. Hope to have the new rural innovation catalyst on board shortly, that's a grand slam position shared with SetCorp, so the interviews on that are completed, I think they've selected an individual, and that person should be coming to work shortly, and I think they're pretty excited about the person they're hiring, seems to be a great fit, so we'll see how that goes. And that'll give Sean and SetCorp a lot of assist in that area. The Cherry Pie Road Race Bike Race has returned this year again, in April, we had 500 branders in town last year, and we really had a great time, and I believe it was raining, but they came anyway. So it was a good, it was a good event, and we hope it'll be a great event again. So going back to what I was talking to you about, the part planning, the workshop we had, we had over 40 people show up for that, that started at four and went on to beyond 6:30, beyond the advertised time, people kept coming in and screaming in. It was a really nice event, and a lot of good ideas were posted on that, so that gave the greenworks, a lot of material to work with, and start, you know, honing in on what's going to happen in the volume of the central part of Riverview Park, the main part of the free park. So that's been pretty exciting, I don't know how many of you made it, but there were some, some good materials to sort of get through, each idea is across. We are working together with the county on a grant application to fund a feasibility study to explore certain honey-crop rated whole county with broadband. So we hope that that will go forward, we hope that in the end, you know, with any kind of luck, my net, if we do get broadband moving forward in the county, at some point, that my net will be able to also jump on board and take advantage of that offering. So we'll see. We hosted an Oregon Main Street Workshop Thursday and Friday last week. We are also hosting Oregon City County Managers Association on February 22nd. We will be doing a, sort of showcasing to that group, the managers from, on the board, I serve on their board, from around the state, that will be showcasing what's going on with the hotel project. And speaking of the hotel project, we're looking at groundbreaking, probably mid-March, we don't have an exact day yet, but we will definitely, we are working on getting an exact day and ceremony put together for that, because that's really, really exciting. We are, yes, on the way, the sound franchise should be coming back to you with an actual document that both parties agreed to, we've got all the details, not just in the drafting now. We had, the mayor oversaw a citizenship event on Martin Luther King Day as well. That was fun, we had great turnout, it was a nice party, nice after-party, it was kind of a cool thing, and we're going to try and replicate that if possible, in Penn State, the mayor wants to keep doing that. So, kind of fun. Let's see, we're working with tourism, rare, with tourism, with rare, with our students, our American Corps students, and also extension to develop the whole county farm loop, someone who wanted created in Marion County, so that's, that work is going on. We have, we are gearing up for the summer series, meeting next week with the businesses to help them optimize their participation in that event. We would like to find as many ways as possible for businesses to take advantage of that offering, because we bring a couple thousand people on average every Friday to that event on Fridays, and a, you know, a similar, shorter, smaller number on Thursdays, so that's a lot of traffic that businesses, we hope, can take advantage of. A reminder to you who are going to the CAG dinner, that's next Wednesday, week from tomorrow, so spear a pendant. And then, finally, a reminder, February 12th is our Lincoln, Abraham Lincoln's coming to town, and we are helping to sponsor that event. So that's what I have on my regular report.
Anyone want to ask any questions at this point?
Yes.
Councilmore.
Thank you. The community engagement position, is that currently vacant?
It is.
And has the hiring, have we sought people to fill it yet?
We are. We have just finalized the announcement, that's going, that's getting distributed and posted as we speak. I believe the first review on that date is February 18th?
Twenty-first?
Maybe it's 21st. It's open until fill, but we will review it, the cutoff is on the, the actual announcement actually, I think. I can pull that up real quickly.
That's, that's okay, that's okay.
Okay, it is open now, and the posting will be on our website as well as, as well as targeted in various locations that we think could be helpful.
Okay.
In response, and then we have a couple folks who will target directly.
Good. You had mentioned an event on Saturday, February 10th, the downtown tech, what? What was the rest of the name of that?
The Downtown Tech Adventure.
Adventure, okay.
This goes with the marriage proclamation of the Smart World Community and Smart Meter Day. Pacific Power is really helping us organize a, kind of a downtown mini-walking tour type of event to highlight both what we've been doing with technology, and also, of course, their smart meter deployment. They're, they're actually partnering with Ben Krieger, who did our comic book a couple years ago. So you'll be able to go to one of the four stops, each of four stops, pick up a page of the comic book, and get it bound at the last stop. And each stop will have kind of fun activities related to technology, things that we've had going on for both adults and kids.
Okay, thank you.
That was February 13th, on the first review.
February 13th.
The first review date.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Just some questions? If not, I'm going to have you move into your Independence Landing information update report.
So you have a fairly exhaustive staff report on all the various things going on with the landing. I'm sort of collectively calling it the landing these days, because Independence Landing really now is our development project for the hotel and apartments. That's for the eight lots out there, we also have the Unriltie doing lot A, so that's a separate distinct project that we're retaining several units ourselves, so it's really actually a separate landing subdivision, and if we just call it the landing for the purposes of these meetings, that'll help to clarify that. We're still going through the naming protocols here, trying to figure out how to build and do on this, but there's lots of activity, as you can see in my report, the, we are expecting the kickoff on the hotel in March, we have most of the work done, GT's work, there's still a tiny little punch list left on that, but we are holding more money than he has work to do, so we're not terribly worried about that. And I told you that looking at March, to let the last of that contract, public work contract go out, as well as the sewer project, that's the pump station. And then, anything else, I go to part, part work, Independence Landing part improvements, again, we are hoping to move, you know, we're moving fast on the design work as fast as we can, and we are hoping to get, get, be able to bid and do that work early in the summer, depending on availability of financial resources. We're trying to get out, you know, we're going to work with the state to see if we can work in advance of the bond issuance in 2019, so we can get this work either close to done or all the way done before the, before the, you know, to stay out of the way of hotel work.
And also before the prices rise again in construction costs.
Yeah, there's an action, we may end up taking an interest penalty, but we may, we may break even on the, avoiding the cut, the increase in construction costs by waiting a year, so it's likely to be pretty close to breaking even. So with that, you know, again, again, a fairly extensive report, it's in your packet. Is there questions on what's going on with the various projects on landing or renewal projects out there?
Just some questions? Okay, we're keeping you at the podium a long time tonight, because I think it's time to go into the Surplus Property.
Yeah, it is. One other point, I just want to make sure everybody's understanding, the financials, the complete financials on that, on Independence Landing, the public work, remaining on the website, so if you continue to be curious about each and every expenditure, they're available to be seen. That's, we've been doing that for years.
Have those been updated recently?
Oh, I don't know, Gloria, you're to answer that question, she does a pretty good job of saying that.
Because the last time I looked, they were still from November.
November, okay, I can answer that question. But thank you for it. So moving on to sale of real property, and I have to point out one thing, and I think we did this in a way that's probably a tad more transparent than folks are used to doing, and I hate to harp on that word, but frequently, if you're in a community, and I've worked in those communities, and art, you know, real estate is a pretty much private transaction, even public real estate, you don't negotiate real estate in public, it doesn't make sense. If you're trying to compensate certain things, like we are trying to compensate certain things, you know, you make your deal, you know, move in, and you, then you explain the deal publicly, which is sort of where we are today. But we've talked for a while about, this property's been on the market now since 2011, so there's nothing secret about the fact that the city has been trying to market this property, we've not been terribly successful, as we've all had the bruises and, you know, scars to be reminded of. We've been in foreclosure, we've had, you know, we recently had a lease come and go with before they ever set up shop, the distillery. I mean, it's been, you know, it's been a difficult property to move, to move. We did look at, we did have active conversations with the museum, did do some architectural analysis with the museum to see if that makes sense, honestly, it would have been a tough lift. If the architect's report was to be believed, you know, highly recommended priority projects would have been in the neighborhood of $800,000, $100,000 worth of work. Non-emergency high priority projects would have been under $1.2, $1.3 million, so the doors, they were close to $2 million dollars, that would have been a very, there's no, there's no way that the existing building, the sale of the existing building would have ended anything like that, it would be quite an effort on behalf of the museum. I know they're willing and desirous, you know, they show a lot of enthusiasm, but at the end of the day, it didn't, you know, that wasn't probably going to be the best fit. I'm anxious to work with the museum, try and find a better fit, something that hit the target for him, happy to do that, and I'll continue to, you know, make myself available to make that happen. But let's talk about the, you know, I mean, we've had it on the market for 2011, it's been nothing but money burn for the city, we have to, we have to pay for the ongoing O&amp;M, we're not getting any property tax off the property. Foreclosure costs us, you know, you know, costs us everything we receive from the tenant and so, I mean, the legal fees were pretty excessive, and we did not get a hold from that transaction. So, you know, we have, as I said, we actively marketed, we put out signs, we had, we did get a lot of interest, the interest without was lowball, owner finance, I think the council had clarified a couple of years ago that we're tired of owner finance, it's not working out great for us, with that problem of other properties, I'll name the names. But that said, you know, we didn't want to be, like, holding the note any longer, you know, we wanted this property out for owners, we wanted it to be a contributing property to the downtown business community. So that's been, that narrows the focus quite a bit. There are a lot of things you can do with a building, and I believe, you know, Facebook is full of a lot of those choices, but in truth, one, yeah, if somebody's stepped up and they can offer, and it's been out there for sale, and two, that offer sort of has to make sense to us, and it has to become with financial veritho, to make it happen. We had several parties whose last go-around, as the economy proves, that really did have the finances to make it worthwhile, and two were of particular interest to us. One in the end went through, but I think where we ended up with, I'm very proud of the deal that we struck, and it looks a little bit on paper like, well, what are we getting? Well, let's talk about what we're getting. So first off, this is a standalone market, maybe it's, it is associated with the people that are doing Independence Station, we hope they, you know, and it is an integral part to what they're doing at Independence Station. And from my perspective as your manager, I think that's the bigger fish to fry. And so whatever we can do to further the completion of that facility, we want to do. And essential to Independence Station for their ultimate tenancy, which they are, you know, disposed of security and signing off on everything, is more parking than they have available on site. And so this offered them an opportunity to be my security in this property, to add to that parking inventory, a necessary part of their parking inventory. So that was hugely important to us, it was important to us that we can get a good productive use of that building, more important to us is what happens on the street. And anything we could do in this building that could make that parking across the street successful, we want to do that. That's been, you know, I think the committee is well aware, that's been a my sour for one of 15 years now, 14 years, whatever it is, and it's time to solve that problem. And this property contributes largely to solving that problem. But that in itself would be a home run just to get that done, but we think we've got the big plan here, or the trifecta, because not only do we, you know, if all goes well, Independence Station gets done, it gets done, the tenant makes their proposal, they get the parking, but we also get a great use, a targeted use for us of the old city hall. This is not another bar, this is a brewery, that is very different from another bar in the community. I recognize that folks were a little bit confused on that. Behind me is a gentleman, Yul, Yul Provencha, who is building a brewery as well, and I think Yul has expressed, not to me, but really to others, that he welcomes a brewery in town, because it's going to help add to the imagery, the branding, and the draw of the community. And so that's a different use, and it's a productive... And so that's a different use, and it's a productive use for the community. It's what we've targeted. And so to make that work, we did some negotiations with them. We met with their, with a proposed brewmeister, brewer, or whatever. And we queried them in length, and we're convinced that the people they're bringing are the real thing, the real deal. So we said, "Well, you bring these folks, and you bring them within a year of completion of your, you know, of this deal, and there'll be a couple of target days." So they're roughly a year from, you know, when we close up this deal, and then you get your proposals into us, and you have opened to you a $200,000 credit," that's in my report. So that would come, that would be reimbursed from $350,000 we would have been paid. So if they do nothing, we get $350,000 and they get a building, okay? With $350,000, better off as a community. That's really helpful. That's not the best deal on our mind. Best deal on our mind is to get a good targeted business use like a brewery, and get the taxes that come off that, get the jobs that come off it, and get the added business to the whole community that that provides, because that should provide more foot traffic for all our downtown businesses, because people don't just go to one place. As you all know, they like to walk around town and visit multiple places, and they like different experiences when they go. They don't always like the same experience. So it's just one more reason to be an independent, so I think that would be a good reason to be an independent. So the other pieces of this deal, actually, are not quite what they look like, what they sound like. So we talked about, they're in there, there's a $100,000 rebate to do the sidewalk. But we wanted to do the sidewalk improvements. What is actually happening here is they do it at private, at private wage, instead of at public wage, you know, with the, the prevalent wage requirements, and they can do it for less and get more for their money. And so what we're doing is just saying, "You do the work, and if you get it done to our standards, and our standards are right, which you see out front of the city hall, then we will reimburse you, because we would have done it anyway." So it really is a net, that's not a net cost off the, off the transaction, is getting a piece of order to the, the streetscape improvements done that we've always wanted to get done. And so that's important to us. So the other thing that's not in this deal, doesn't show up, but is, is we were looking at doing the parking lot ourselves. By their taking ownership, parking lot's their responsibility. So that was a $100,000 cost to us that we no longer will expend. So that's another piece that gets added back into the pie. So if you're really looking at this, just say, "Okay, if it's $350,000 that we get, we give back $200,000, but we save $100,000, but really $250,000 is good, not counting even the property tax we're going to get at the brewery at Old Ace, which is $20,000,000, and all the fees and jobs and activity we get." I think that's a home run. We're really happy with that deal. And so, you know, I don't think that deal any day. I mean, we've been here for a lot of years waiting for any kind of deal. Now we've got, you know, now we've got some great deals on the books. You know, they're chimpopping all over the place, so they're good ones. So that's sort of what I got to say about the sale of the Old City Hall, other than asking whether you were interested in us to go forward and give you the authority to execute that contract.
I fully agree with everything that you just said about that property. I'm so delighted to see it be something besides, first of all, as you said, paper that we hold, because we don't want to do that anymore. And this, to me, is a much more viable use and a much more attractive purpose than what it was most recently used for.
Or is it currently so? Quick question, because those of us that spend some time downtown are fully aware that we sometimes have parking issues. So with that transfer in ownership on the parking lot, what, what happens to those spaces, other than private use spaces or?
They will be available, those that are available will be available, of course. The public will not be excluded from the site. And in fact, they will be for their own business purposes for the, for the brewery. So you can expect probably in the evenings, the tenants of the Independence Station, because the upper floors will be residential, will want those spaces. So, you know, from, once residents arrive and the state arrives for the evening, you know, those spaces will be dorked up. But up to that one time, there will be through the day and probably early into the evening, there'll be space available. Which is not getting there, too, because their parking lot are harsh.
Other questions? I really appreciated the thorough presentation that augmented your written reports, and I really appreciate that. I'm excited about what this can do. Let me get a clarification now. You said brewery, does that, you mean brewery or a brew pub type?
So they will, their primary focus will be on producing beer. They will have a tasting room with, you know, light food and whatnot, but it's not going to be like a full-blown restaurant, at least in the beginning.
So can you analogize it to, would it be something?
I guess what I would say, something coming to mind really, is if you've been to Boneyard and Bend, it's a, you know, kind of, they got sort of a production area and then a kind of a small taproom essentially, with, like I said, there, you know, there they just feel rather, but these guys are saying they're, it's going to be a, I mean, like I said, a small taproom with a kind of limited food service, at least initially. Their plan is to eventually work up to a full, you know, kind of restaurant, you know, food offering like a, like a lot of breweries you see in the area, but it'd be limited initially.
Perhaps similar to what Red Gate Winery is now, only with beer instead of wine? Where there's a tasting room and sometimes food service and?
Yeah, yeah, they definitely do plan to be open, you know, I believe seven days a week, you know, for retail sales. So it's, it's not like it's just going to be a closed wholesale production operation.
Can I raise my hand and give you some insight on just that little bit of conversation, please?
Does, anybody have a problem with that?
No.
And we're going to, and I'm just, yeah, I'm forward.
To have a, a full brewery, okay, you talked about a lot of jobs, you're looking at about six to brew beer. You can't have a brew pub unless you have food. You go see Saw and Salem, they have a taco truck. You go do a couple other ones, there's like three or four of them now, but what they do is they put a taco truck out so you can have food. You can't have a beer tasting facility without food.
Right. Yeah, just like any other Old City operation. Okay. Additional questions for the manager? Okay, council members, we have in front of us, we have some recommendations and some options here, and it is an action item this evening.
Yes, and I know that we have to declare this surplus property before we think we can be done with it.
And I think, I think this is a, if I could call correctly, this is a restated of the same, same surplus that we're just making sure that, because it's been a couple, it's been a number of years since we officially surplus this.
And the resolution accomplishes both surplus of the brewery and then authorizing the, the sale transaction.
I move that Resolution 1470 be adopted as presented.
I have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? I'm happy with this. I'm excited for how this all fits together. I really think that, you said it was a trifecta. I think, I think all these parts link together. I'm going to be excited to see, there's going to be a lot of construction this summer. With that, any other discussion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, add a motion to carry this. Thank you very much. Okay, council announcements, please?
Yes.
At my surprise.
No. I wanted everyone to know that the Hoppen Heritage Festival is coming back this fall, and it will be managed by the Independence Downtown Association. And if you have any kind of suggestions or have a fervent wish to volunteer, please go see Greg Peterson at Independence Grill, because he is our 2018 chairman.
Counselor, it's on kind of a somber note, I just wanted to say, it was announced today that legendary Oregon author, Ursula Caitlin, passed away yesterday in Portland, and so I urge anybody to go to the library, check out her seat trophy or any of her other works.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anything from anybody else?
I just have one more comment. I just, this is not an announcement, this is just a reminder that last meeting, we talked about getting a report on what goes into the water bills, and I appreciate that it was on the report for, that there were things they're working on for council, but I'm hoping to see a, a final report on that the next meeting.
Thank you, appreciate that. Somebody like to send us home for dinner?
I do.
I, I, that was pretty quick. That's a motion over there, there's a second by, uh.
Somebody.
There you go. All in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm going to close my carry, thank you very much.